Okay, we'll now hear the general plan amendment 2017-01.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Jeff Brown, Chief of the Research Division in the Department of Planning and Zoning. As you recall, back on February 16th, Carl Dela Ronzo and I presented an overview of APFO and the recent APFO Task Force process and the recommendations for changes to that law. That session was an informational session, basically to provide a forum of, you know, to give us a chance to be able to present the recommendations, to give that information to the planning board and the public, and also to provide an opportunity for the public to testify. And during that meeting, we had said, we presented a total of 18 recommendations. We gave an overview of APFO, we talked about the task force process, and then we talked about the DPZ technical staff report on the 18 recommendations. We had indicated, I don't know if you recall, one of the recommendations, or one of the task, the task force recommendations and DPZ's recommendations requires a general plan amendment, one of the 18. And at the time, we didn't, and a general plan amendment requires that the planning board make a recommendation on that general plan amendment. So we're coming back to you today on that one item, one of the 18 items that requires a general plan recommendation. At the time, we didn't ask for that recommendation in February because we didn't have the 30 days notice, so now we have the 30 days notice, and we're doing it, we're coming back to you for that one recommendation. So I'll go over what that is briefly. It's recommendation 13, and that increases the established communities allocations from 400 to 600, and decreases the growth and revitalization annual allocations from 1,200 to 1,000, contingent on elimination of the shared allocation pool, which was motion five. And I know there was a lot that we went over that, in that meeting in February, so I'll give a brief recap of this particular motion and explain it. So the way the allocation system works now in APFO is we give out allocations by various regions, and this map represents those regions. There's a chart in the general plan, figure 610, which is aligned with that map, and in fact, the colors on this chart align with the map in the general plan itself. And so the various allocation areas include what you see up there on the screen. Growth revitalization in established communities is part of that. And as a, if you recall, the growth and revitalization area is the, kind of the pink area on that map, which is intended to be the revitalization areas in Howard County, primarily the Route 1 corridor, areas like Maple Lawn, Village Centers, Emerson, the Route 40 corridor, basically areas that the general plan policy stipulates where we want to concentrate redevelopment efforts. And so at the time, when the general plan was passed, Plan Howard 2030 in 2013, this chart that you see in front of you, 610, was set up such as, as you see, with 1,200 allocations each year going to the growth and revitalization areas, and 400 allocations going to the established communities area. And again, the established communities areas are the brown areas in the eastern part of the county. So that was what was adopted, and APFO adheres to that chart. When the APFO law was passed shortly after, or amended shortly after this general plan was adopted, a provision was added by the county council that created what's called a shared pool. And the shared pool is such that it's set up that if any, in any given year, if not all of the growth and revitalization allocations, or not all of the established community allocations are used, then those excess allocations go into a shared pot that anybody from any region can use. And the reason they added that provision was because there was testimony at that time that the 400 units per year in the established communities area wasn't enough, and that some, some of the developers and builders felt that the 400 was too restrictive. And so that provision was added to provide flexibility. And again, the county council added that as an amendment back shortly after 2013. So what this provision does, provision 13, we proposed to amend this chart contingent on getting rid of the shared pool. What's happening is there is, the growth and revitalization allocations aren't being used now that the general plan's been in effect for three, going on four, five years. The shared pool is getting bigger and bigger and bigger. So what that means is anybody can tap from that shared pool, and it makes the allocation areas really, it renders them meaningless, because if you can, if you can have a shared pool, and you can place those allocations in any part of eastern Howard County, then it, it makes the distinction between the growth and revitalization area and the established communities area, you know, meaningless. So what's happened over time, the shared pool has, has increased. So we proposed, or the APFO, the task force has proposed to get rid of the shared pool, contingent on the fact of increasing the established communities area from 400 to 600 to alleviate the concern that 400 isn't enough. Does that, does that all make sense? It was, it was a lot. Okay, good. So that's why those two motions, the task force wanted to make those two motions contingent upon each other. The one motion, motion 13, that, that's in front of you today, that we're asking for your recommendation for, is the one motion that increases the, changes this chart basically, increases the established communities allocations to 600, and decreases the growth and revitalization allocations by 1,200. So that's the, what, that chart basically up in front of you now is, is the actual amendment to figure 610. It reduces from 1,200 to 1,000, and increases from 400 to 600, beginning in the year 2020. The reason it begins in the year 2020 is because that's going to be the next effective year of APFO. APFO was always three years ahead, so in July of 2017, the county council's going to adopt a new APFO chart, and that's going to be effective for the 2020 allocation year. We're currently in the 2019 allocation year, that year is, is going to be passed, so this change will only impact the figure 610 from the year 2020 through 2030. The total number of allocations in the county remains the same, it's just switching them between the two. Now by doing this, the, it looks as though, and it is, you know, the established communities allocations increases from 400 to 600, but we're also getting rid of the shared pool, which is growing over time, and that shared pool looks like this. So this is the current allocation chart that was actually adopted by the county council last July. The shared growth and revitalization and established community pool is the last row there, and you can see that there's 366 in 2019, 320 in 2020, and 96 in 2021. Next year, when they adopt the chart, coming up this July, the, those numbers are going to increase, because the number of growth and revitalization allocations haven't been used to their full extent. So even though we're increasing the established communities allocations from 400 to 600, we're also getting rid of the shared growth and revitalization and established communities pool, so that's important, that's an important thing to keep in mind. So the overall amount of allocations that will be available actually in the established communities area will be less, under the motions 13 and motions five, both being adopted at the same time as the task force recommends. This basically talks about motion five, which is the, removing that allowance. Now, one of the, one of the criteria for recommendation is that the change to the chart is consistent with the general plan, and so the technical staff report discusses this, and what you have up on the, up on the presentation before you is kind of a summary of, of that. Policy 6.1 of the general plan, it says, maintain adequate facilities and services to accommodate growth. And there's C and D of that, policy 6.1, C is revised APF regulation, and it says, to amend the current adequate public facilities regulations to reduce allocation categories and reflect designated places. So we're still keeping those designated places that's called for in the general plan. So we're still, we're still keeping those, and D is APFO housing allocations, incorporate the Plan Howard 2030 housing forecast into the adequate public facilities housing unit allocation chart. The forecast also continued to be in that chart, and in fact, the numbers of allocations as originally proposed in Plan Howard 2030, back in 2013, remains the same, we're just switching the categories between the two areas and getting rid, getting rid of the shared pool. So it maintains consistency with Plan Howard 2030. So with that, I'm available with, for any questions that you may have.
Any questions? You can do.
Was it considered at all to, to have, like, say, 200 units shared between the pink and the, and the growth area? Sort of like the shared pool, but, so if, if something came along that wanted to do something in the pink that could use the 1,200, did it could actually go in there?
Yes, in fact, that was a motion that the task force raised. One of the motions was to, let me explain it this way. Let's say there was a, in, in the established communities area, which is the brown area, if there was an upzoning, then the proposal was that if there is an upzoning, for example, if something went from R20 to RA15, then that upzoning would take allocations from the growth and revitalization allocation pool. And so the task force did discuss that, but the task force did not recommend that, they did not.
They did, they passed it.
Oh, they did pass it? Okay, the task force did pass that. So the DPZ's technical staff report did not recommend it, and the, the county administration has, is not planning to move forward with that as legislation to the county council. And the reason we did, we, in DPZ's technical staff report, the reason that we don't think that's a good idea, is because it really, it goes against the concept of growth and revitalization areas. We set those areas for a particular reason, we want to concentrate on revitalizing, one, the village centers and particular areas of Howard County. Yeah, that could be the other potential case, is the map, the map would then effectively be changed every time you do a rezoning. And so it would be hard to be consistent with the, the general plan by just having that. Now, if there is an upzoning, and it has happened, they still can take allocations from the established communities area. And quite frankly, there hasn't really been an issue with allocations in terms of not being enough allocations. Growth has been slowing in Howard County, and in fact, right now, just now, it's March, so the allocation begins in July, so it's all the way through, from last July through March, we just ended up using the 400 allocations for the established communities area. And with, with two months left, there have been some plans that have tapped into that shared pool, but there, there's not that many of them tapping into that shared pool. So with 600, though, that would allow that extra, extra amount that could be, which would alleviate the concern of, of the folks thinking that 600 enough, 600, 400 a year isn't enough.
So specifically, what I was saying was, was the, the red area would, would stay, it would go to 1,000, the, the established community area, the brown area, would stay at 400, and then there would be 200 that could be used between either?
Oh, I see, so you would say, you would have another pool that would be shared between either of them? Yeah, that, that wasn't raised by the task force, that idea was not raised.
Because then if, if, if the, the pink area wanted to increase, where, where you were actually trying to improve growth, you would have that over, you would have that units, but if they weren't, then you would, it still wouldn't get worse than the 600 in the established community, and that.
Right, and that, but actually, what's happening is, the 1,200, what's happening in reality is that 1,200 is not even being close to being used. Because it has been used over the last three, four, five years, but looking forward, the amount of redevelopment opportunity along the Route 1 corridor and other places isn't at the level of 1,200 per year. So, you know, my view is that, you know, it's probably not necessary to have that pool for the, for the 1,200 area, for the growth and revitalization area. What's, what's been happening actually is, because there hasn't been that many used in the growth and revitalization area, the pool's been growing, but it's the places in the brown area that's been used, and so they end up being used at a, at a higher level.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, go on. So we do have some folks who want to give testimony, seems to be four people. I'll start off with, I brought up with Brent Lovelace.
This may be a little longer, I was a member of the Adequate Public Facilities Task Force, so I'm very familiar with a lot of these things, and we have a lot of concepts to go over. I apologize, I'll try to be as brief as possible. What you have here is a, one of many interconnected things for our first comprehensive review of adequate public facilities, and I want to make sure we all are very clear, adequate public facilities, that is the goal that we're trying to accomplish here. And we're looking at a single provision here, which has a great benefit. It's trying to meet smart growth goals and put development where the resources are and where they're identified, by eliminating the share, shared pools, which effectively negated some of the smart growth provisions in here. So let, let's go over that one more time, real quick. Ideally, if you're doing smart growth, you're concentrating it in your growth and revitalization areas, and lessening it elsewhere. And the shared pools had a corrosive effect, where you could potentially have growth occurring where it was not planned or attended. The bigger item here is the second one. We have a conditional agreement here. Our goal of adequate public facilities is to provide adequate public facilities. So the goal of one was to provide a better alignment with smart growth policy. The goal of this second component is to change allocations because of, how does that further smart growth? How does that help us reach our goal of adequate public facilities? It was essentially somebody had some property somewhere that is more advantageous to go one direction or the other. Obviously, eventually, if we do concentrate all our growth in growth and revitalization areas, there will be no growth and revitalization areas. Everything will be established communities, and we may have to make adjustments. But keep in mind, the master goal of this, all the interrelated components of this, including schools, which hopefully we'll get to, is to achieve a certain level of public facilities at a certain quality consistently, and we should not have some of the problems we're having with infrastructure and budgets, if we actually implement this correctly. You will note, last night, the council was discussing changing all the Columbia allocations, that's the other red area in this chart. So you are actually modifying a chart that's being, in the process of being modified again, we have layered changes to it. I'm not going to speak to that in great detail, just, you should be aware that there, the numbers you are adjusting here are also being adjusted currently as we speak. So I'd like to wrap up. What is the goal we're trying to achieve here, and how are we meeting the goal with this? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next person, Judy George.
I honestly, I don't know why I always come after Brent, because he already said everything that's brilliant. But just, I think you need to hear from other people that we have concerns about the allocations, and I think it really made people crazy when you think you live in an established neighborhood, and then all of a sudden, oh, by the way, we're going to throw in a few extra houses here, we're going to throw in a few extra houses here. Oh yeah, this developer made a deal, they get to do a few extra houses here. And that part really is affecting a lot of the established neighborhoods where, you know, especially for APFO, where, you know, now we don't have enough resources for our schools, and our schools are getting more and more crowded. And I think that that needs to be part of this conversation, that you guys are aware that, you know, the unintended consequences that Jeff talked about, that it's very painful for our kids, and we should be the adults and do the right thing for the kids, because the kids can't say what, you know, the kids can't say, oh my God, it's so crowded at school, I can't even move in the hallway. I mean, it's like, and I feel like the kids are getting a lot of stress from being at school in such crowded conditions, and it really needs to be addressed, not just here at the planning board, but at all different layers, which is why I practically live in this room. Because we really have a lot of work to do, and it's just not enough, and our kids are really suffering because of it. And I just really am imploring you to think about the kids who can't talk. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Garber.
I'd like to strongly urge you to not approve this GPA. We have to keep track of the fact that we are Maryland's second smallest jurisdiction, yet we're growing faster than our surrounding counties. Over 50% of our landmass is now covered with built, the built environment. Perhaps we need to reexamine these overly ambitious growth allocations before we totally sacrifice our quality of life here. On March 29th, I attended a steering committee meeting for the Development Regulations Assessment Project being conducted by Clarion Consulting Firm for the DPZ. Several committee members shared concerns about infill development in established communities. Don Elliott, the lead consultant, commented that basically, infill development and compatibility with established neighborhoods are mutually exclusive concepts. This recognition should result in a decrease, rather than an increase, in the number of allocations in the established communities category. The very nature of Howard County's established communities is being changed by excessive infill development. The disregard for environmental and historic features, as well as burgeoning school population growth, are severely decreasing the quality of life in our established neighborhoods. I'd like to throw out some questions for your consideration. Shouldn't Howard County be working to retain families who've resided here for decades and work to keep their communities desirable? Shouldn't we recognize that infill can result in the most egregious environmentally insensitive situations, where for example, nine homes on flag lots replace a single home on a forested lot on steep slopes to the Potuxin? Why should we tolerate upsetting the established stormwater flow? Why should we worsen situations like in Savage, where narrow roads are literally impassable during school drop-off and pickup times due to the schools growing and growing and growing? Why should we abandon good neighborhood design concepts to shoehorn houses in front of or behind existing ones? With the proliferation of infill developments on private roads and alleys, aren't we creating dangerous situations for fire trucks? Aren't the new residents on these private roads and alleys relegated to second-class status with no public trash up, trash pickup or snow removal? The further destruction of established neighborhoods can stop here if you, as a planning board, stand up for them. Thank you for considering this.
Thank you. Ben Woodruff.
I apologize, I think my handwriting is poor, it's Beth.
Oh, okay. I apologize, I didn't catch the T there, okay.
So I'm Beth Woodruff. I own the historic home of Roger Carter at 8611 Main Street in Elicott City. I'm here tonight to ask for your help. I'd like to provide some ideas that you could employ or add to your recommendation this evening for the APFO regulations. Specifically, we need to protect our communities by considering responsible development, we need to reconsider the number of allocations. Jeff, would you mind going back to the map that shows the, the different colors? So as you can see on the map, Historic Elicott City is actually in the highest growth and revitalization area. As you approved tonight, $200,000 to study parking in this area, it's illogical to me that we would add potentially 1,000 or 1,200 more residences or kitchens or units, housing units, to this area, knowing that there is congestion and knowing the propensity this area has for flooding. Additionally, we don't add to the historic charm of our city by adding new development to that area. As we consider the APFO tests, we need to consider stormwater quantity management. As Howard County, we do a fantastic job of quality management, but throughout the, throughout the county, we have issues with stormwater quantity management. As we heard from the woman tonight who talked about the barrens, habitat and the butterflies, stormwater management is an issue throughout the county, and specifically in the Typer-Hudson watershed. I would encourage you to consider adding a test for stormwater management throughout the county, but specifically in the Typer Water, Typer-Hudson watershed. My encouragement would include adding 100% retention rate in a 200-year storm for new development throughout the county, and then within the Typer-Hudson watershed, I would ask for 120% water retention rate in a 500-year storm. You know, tonight, there's a storm, there's a thunderstorm waiting for us when we go outside. And after this meeting, I'll go home, and I'll lay in my bed, and I'll listen to the sound of the rain falling, and I will worry. And I will worry that tonight is the night the, the foundation of my home is taken out from me and my child's head as we sleep at night. I will watch the depth of the water rise in the culvert, and I will be scared all night. I will text my neighbors, I will text my friends who are further down the riverbed, and I will tell them how high the river has gotten and whether or not they need to move their sandbags. I will likely cry with frustration that the county has decided that the bottom lines of new developments is more important than the lives of my neighbors or my community. I will fear the next storm, as I do every time it rains, and so does the rest of my community. But that's what I'll do later tonight. Right now, I am asking for your help, I am begging you to include stormwater management as a test for APFO. I want to save the lives of people in my community, I want, I don't want another community in Howard County or anywhere else to deal with what we dealt with when the flood occurred last. We can't afford that as a community, and quite frankly, it's financially irresponsible to put our money into reconstruction and not put it into prevention. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Metz.
Hi, my name is Melissa Metz, and I live in Chatham. I was here for the February meeting on the recommendations to adjust APFO, and I heard some concerning things at that meeting. There seems to have been inadequate public consultation on the changes to APFO that were proposed. The arrangements for allowing a development to proceed even if the APFO tests are not met after four to five years is extremely concerning and seems to undermine the whole, excuse me, the whole purpose of APFO. There's a broad range of other issues that seem not to have been adequately resolved, not the least of which is to add a stormwater quantity test, as Beth Woodruff just, just mentioned. Also, to remove the Also, to remove the historic district from the growth and revitalization tier. So, before making recommendations, before making decisions on the recommendations before us tonight, I would like to ask, how are we going to be sure that there are adequate public facilities for these allocations that you're voting on tonight? Also, what is happening with the process of updating APFO and taking into account the testimony that was presented at the February meeting? And also, is the established, is the increase in allocations in the established communities to appease the developers, given the reduction in the growth and revitalization tier? Further, does increasing the allocations in the established communities mean that zoning regulations on density, et cetera, will still be respected or not? I do strongly agree with doing away with the shared pool of allocations. I understand how it distorts the intentions of the development regulations. So, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to testify, and I would appreciate if you could address these questions about the overall status of the APFO adjustments. And I would also like to request that you take into account the whole of the APFO regulations before voting on this aspect, because without APFO being addressed fully, we have really no way of knowing whether these new allocations, whether there would be adequate public facilities for these new allocations, or these adjusted allocations. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Come up and, if you give your name and address, please?
Good evening. Thank you. Jennifer Grahams, 3050 Terra Maria Way. I'd like to reiterate the comments of one of the previous speakers who talked about the impact of the decisions being made here on our children. I'm a parent of a student at Manor Woods Elementary School on the edge of the rural west. We have a critical need for relief at our school. We're currently at 114% capacity. A recent projection from the school department shows us hitting 143% capacity in 2018. And why is this? Well, we're watching units, residential units booming in our area. We have over 500 new units that are coming online between now, today, and in the next, excuse me, few years, primarily Turf Valley and the new development at West Mount that they're breaking ground on now. I would like to share that it's my opinion that our entire county needs to shift from a growth mindset to that of an established community, so that we can maintain and sustain our infrastructure. And the APFO adjustments need to reflect that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I guess we can move into a work session. Does anyone hear a motion?
I motion that we move to work session.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So, as we're talking, I just want to clarify the comment about if a developer hasn't gotten approval within so many years, they are allowed to move forward with their development anyway. Is that correct?
That is one of the DPZ recommendations that will be going to the, moving towards the county council. It's a very nuanced recommendation that the task force voted to recommend. It actually is related to a combination of two tests. It's the combination of the allocation test and the open-closed schools test. What happens, or happened in the past, it hasn't happened for quite some time, and it's unlikely to happen for quite some time, because, as I was saying before, there really aren't an issue with the allocations. There's, the full amount of allocations in the general plan aren't being used. But what happened in the mid-2000s, when housing was strong, it could be that in a certain area of the county, in particular in Elkridge, if there was a lot of growth, the allocations would phase that growth. So, there might be a big demand in Elkridge, let's say 300 units, but Elkridge was 100 units per year. So, projects would have to wait in the waiting bin for allocations for two, three years. That hasn't happened for quite some time. Lately, last year, there was no, no projects waiting for allocations. There can be instances where they may wait for one year. But in the mid-2000s, they're waiting two, three years. And then, they'd finally get their allocations, and then they take the schools test. And then, the school would be closed. And the maximum that you're, can be on hold for schools is four years. So, you end up being three years and then four years, so it could be seven or eight years. And there was, it was an element of unpredictability. You would get your allocations, and the school chart would show it as open, but then the next year, the school chart would show it as closed. So, then you'd be held up for another four years. So, the task force thought that that, that the unpredictability of that, plus the wait time of seven or eight years, which exceeds the intent of what APFO was designed to do, was those two, those two points combined, they felt that it would be best that if a project was held up for allocations and then passed, then fail the schools test, the total wait time couldn't be longer than five years. Right now, they can be held for four years. So, the total wait time would be five years. You want, one wait, one year, wait year for allocations, and then four years max for schools, it would be five years, rather than seven or eight years.
So, so what you're saying is that that's no longer going to be implemented, or that is, you know?
So, the recommendation is that the maximum amount of wait time between the combination of allocations and open-closed schools would, will be five years.
And if there is not a sufficient school space, the developer is allowed to move forward? Is that correct?
That's correct. And that's the way it works now. So, right now, if a project moves forward and fails the schools test, they can be on hold for up to four years maximum. Because if you hold something up longer than four years, then that's considered a taking of personal property.
And that's what, that's the point I wanted you to share with the folks that were testifying. It's not that the planning board really can...
Right. It's a court system, right?
It's a court system. It's not, it's not a planning board item that we can really make a change about.
And that particular item also is, is not, you're not making a recommendation on that item anyways.
I understand, I understand that, but once, we do want to make sure that the public at large understands that we're concerned about the same issues, but we have to also address the reality.
Correct. Any other comments? No?
Yeah, I remember that issue coming up, and I think one was brought it up last time, because it really, it doesn't make sense. It doesn't make any sense, but it was, it was a legal issue.
It was a legal issue.
So, it's outside of the purview?
It's outside of the purview of...
Phil, actually, I do have a question.
I wish you'd go ahead. So, with the 600 units for the established communities, when, when, is there a point where they're ever just filled up?
That's always a hard question to answer. So, we, in the general plan, we do have what's called a build-out scenario. And we have a, we have a land use database that estimates how much development potential is left in the county. So, under the current general plan, then yes, they will be used up because there will be no more development capacity.
When are you projecting to hit that?
In 2030. But then, the plan gets updated again, and as, you know, as things progress, there's rezonings and things like that, that occur in revitalization opportunities. But the intent of the established communities area is to keep it really as established communities. It's a large area, and most of what's happening now are, is infill development. And so, the intent isn't to continually densify the established communities area. The intent is to redevelop and densify the growth and revitalization areas.
Thank you. Any other questions? No?
I just, I don't, I understand motion five. I think it makes sense removing the allowance to share allocations. I understand how that's not working. But the 400 to 600 on number 13, I'm not, I'm not convinced that we're supposed to go from 400 to 600. That's, whereas it sounds like if you don't agree, we don't agree to the 400 to 600, we can't remove the allowance to share. Is that basically what the understanding of this is? You can't have one without the other?
That was really only what the task force recommended. So, the, the task force recommendation was that, and the reason they came to that was because the task force, which was, you know, 23 members, that's kind of how they reached consensus on this issue, that both would pass, you can kind of consider it as a compromise. But that's really a task force contingency that they set up.
And if you're, if you're interested, my name is Carl DiLorenzo, Policy Director for the County Executive, and I staffed the adequate public facilities task force, and so I witnessed all of the deliberations. Both of the motions, five and 13, received a vote of 18 to one in favor by the task force, if that gives some context to how the task, how the vote split with the task force.
So, if I could ask you a question, as we're talking about number of students in the schools, does APFO consider apartment dwellers? Do you count those students? Do you make placements for those students in your numbers?
So, that, I'll let Mr. Brunnell jump in, but there are pupil yield ratios generated by every dwelling unit in the county. And the school system produces the, produces the pupil, pupil yield calculations annually.
Right. And so, an allocation is, is one apartment, one condominium, one townhouse, or one single-family detached home. Every apartment needs, also needs an allocation. So, if there were 600 apartments, then they would take those 600 allocations.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that they were included.
An interesting, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I had, I was under the impression, and I don't know where I got it, and I thought somebody had said it to me, but I just want to clarify while you're here, that the apartment units are included in the allocations and the projected numbers for students.
There are, and there was, to your point, there was a motion that was made that did not pass the task force, which would apply different ratios to apartment dwelling units versus detached and attached single-family units. So, for example, so the motion was, single-family detached unit would receive one allocation, an attached single-family unit would receive the equivalent of .75 of a unit, an apartment dwelling unit would receive a .5 or .25. So, they, so there was a motion to create a proportion based on the unit, the type of unit, and that did not pass. So, that might have been where, the context, that might give some context.
Well, I appreciate you clarifying that.
With, I know you said this earlier, but with the increasing the established communities allocation from 400 to 600, did you say that they're not using even the 400 unit, or allocations, or?
Yeah. So, this year, last year, all 400 were used near the end of the fiscal year. And there were, I don't remember the exact number, but there were some units that were used from the shared pool. This year, it's March, we got two months left. I think a total of 12 units have been used from the shared pool. So, the, there's 400 have been used, and then plus 12 units. It's not quite 400, because there's a rolling average provision, but what was available was used, and 12 have been used thus far from the shared pool.
Okay. Any other questions?
So, but how many are actually available in the shared pool right now, then?
Right now, there's, yeah, let's see here, 366. And this really wasn't as a big of an issue when this happened, because it's taken several years for the shared pool to build up. So, now it's becoming more of an issue.
So, would you say changing these allocations is more, more realistic to what is actually going on in the demand for these allocations?
Yes. I mean, I think so. I think reducing the 1,200 to 1,000 certainly makes sense, because those, those allocations aren't being used in those areas. It's not going to hinder our goal to, you know, for growth and revitalization in the areas it's meant to, meant to be.
And you think that increasing the 400 to the 600 is, is not going to threaten the concept of, is the established communities that you were putting out there when you designed this plan?
Yeah. I don't, I don't think it would, it would threaten it. There will still be a cap at 600 per year, and in fact, it could be that it would end up being less, because there is no more shared pool.
Okay.
So, if we already have crowded schools, though, at 400 plus the, what's coming out of the shared pool, what's your opinion about what the schools are going to be like at 600?
Well, so, the way, you know, the way APFO works is, it's basically a growth management tool and growth management process. So, there are areas of the county where the schools are crowded, and there's developments right now that are on hold, because the schools are, are over 115% capacity. Some projects have been held up for three, four years. So, it's, it's, that time period gives the school system time to plan to build new schools and add additions and redistrict. And so, one of the areas of the county where there is crowding, there's going to be a new school that's going to open up in 2018, near Oxford Square Development, and they're actually planning to do redistricting this year to fill that school and to alleviate the overcrowding in that area. So, the, it's the double test between the allocate, the allocations are really meant to be the overarching growth management tool for all public infrastructure, things like police and fire and parks and rec. And it, given that we have a general plan that says this is what our growth is going to be for the next 20 years, and given that Chart 610 manages that growth, all of the other agencies know what's, knows what's coming and the timing of when it's coming. And so, we're able to manage the growth that way. The schools test, in addition to that, is really to address the school crowding in those certain areas where school is crowded.
You know, the problem, the problem, and I don't know, maybe somebody can tell me that I'm not grasping it correctly, or I'm off-base, but we have a schools test, which is very reassuring, that there's a schools test. But we also know over here, if somebody, a developer, has been asked to sit on hold for five years, they're going to be able to move forward. So, the schools test is only, it's not 100%. It might be 60% effective. Is that a fair, and do I have this correct?
Well, yes, you're correct, that the development gets to move forward after four years. The number of times that's happened since 1992, when APFO began, isn't that many. It's probably about a dozen times. Now, now, it is happening more recently, but the schools are addressing that through building new schools and additions and the redistricting process. It really comes down to redistricting. And it comes down to the decision of the Howard County Public School System, when they redistrict. Do they want to redistrict more broadly and to alleviate crowding everywhere, or do they just want to redistrict in a limited way, just to fill the one school they're opening? So, it can be addressed through three different ways, building new schools, additions, and redistricting. If you look at the overall capacity in the Howard County Public School System, it's close to, it's, it's not overcapacity. It's really in certain areas of the county. There's, now, having said that, it's not that simple, because there's really, there is a lot of logistical problems with redistricting. For example, in the rural west, people keep saying there's a lot of extra capacity, but it's not easy to redistrict and all the kids in the east out to the west, because of the distances and the infrastructure. of the distances and the infrastructure and all of that stuff.
I understand.
It's not a simple solution.
I understand that, yeah.
But that's, that's kind of the problem, or the way it's, it needs to be addressed.
Well, I would, I guess in a larger sense, are, are you saying that the schools are driving the allocation uses, or is the allocation using driving the schools? Because that's the part I could never quite understand. Are they just reacting to whatever gets built, or?
Well, the allocations really are intended to say, you know, and back in the 80s, before ApFO, there were 3,500 units, 4,000 units being built per year, and things were happening very fast. And infrastructure was being deemed inadequate because of this. And so, what the allocation system does is slow that growth down. So, it slowed it down to 2,000 a year. And then when the 2,000 general plan came out, it slowed it down to 1,500 per year. Now, it's back up to about 2,000 primarily because we have a downtown Columbia plan. So, the intent of the allocations really is to pace, pace growth and to provide county government time to plan for adequate infrastructure with that phasing.
So, just to reassure us, you're, you would be able to say that you know that this development, that development would be, is going to be moving forward even though, because we've been holding on to it for so long? Or do you keep track of those developments that are going to be moving forward?
Yes.
Where they are, and what's, how that's going to affect the local schools?
We have, we, we know where all the proposed developments are located, and we know if they have allocations, and we know if they're in a waiting bin for either allocations or for schools. The last few years, there has been no waiting bin for allocations, but there has, there are some plans in the waiting bin for schools. So, we know, you know, that they're in the waiting bin, how long they've been in the waiting bin, and when they're going to get out. We share that information with the school system. So, the school system's projections take into account all of that development in the pipeline as well. And so, if a school system is on hold three years in the future, it's anticipating that this development is on hold, is going to happen at some point. So, that's why it gives them time to build a new school and to redistrict and to add additions and things like that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I mean, I don't, I don't have a question, I have a, my feeling is that I would love to see, like I said, the removing, removing the allowance of the allocations. I don't, I don't feel comfortable with us increasing the allocations from 400 to 600. We already have issues with overcrowding in schooling, like, doesn't make sense to me. I feel like that's giving a gift to developers, not a gift to the community. And so, what, what, what is, what is our reasoning for doing that?
So, as Jeff pointed out, this is a very complex question and, and a number of different issues. Montgomery County looked at this very same thing, and, and what they found was that older development projects were actually generating more school kids than new development projects. And, and Jeff would know off the top of his head probably the mix of, of unit types that are coming in, and it's, it's really higher-density apartment condo units that are not generating the same number of kids as the units that are, exist in Columbia that are now being turned over and, and income a new family. And the schools in a lot of those older neighborhoods were designed under different standards, and the expectations now are to increase, you know, the, the standards of the school. And, and so, you also have that conflict. So, it's not just driven by new development, it's also the backfilling of existing.
Well, that's, yeah, that was, that's what I was going to ask, because it, that's where I live in Columbia, all of a sudden, the portable units are increasing, the schools, they expanded the schools, but the school population out of the old housing stock is growing.
And I think we just recently looked at the school budget and their capital program, and a fair amount of their budget is actually going to renovate existing schools to bring them up to kind of modern standards. So, so it, it's really a very complicated question you pose about, well, is it just the, you know, develop, new developer or developers getting a free ride, you know, with their new development projects, or is it, you know, the backfilling of neighborhoods that are churning, so?
But, but to Jacqueline's point, that increasing from 400 to 600, when, you know, anecdotally, you can look around and see, you know, the, the portable units are behind the school, and they don't go away. So, it's obvious that we're not building the schools fast enough to accommodate these, these populations, so.
Phil, well, again, you know, as, as Jeff mentioned, that this was a recommendation of the task force, the 600.
Is, within our approval, can we question the?
You know, the, the planning board can recommend this forward. Remember, this is not a decision, so you can, you can make a recommendation to either move it forward, you know, with additional study or consideration as, as this particular piece of legislation moves the county council.
Yeah, I, I think I'm sort of sensing this year that we feel that way. Do one of you want to frame a recommendation?
Could we say motion to recommend approval of number five, of removing the allowance of shared allocations, but?
So, that, that's why this is sort of complicated. The only recommendation that's in front of you is the change to Figure 610.
Oh, the 400 to 600.
Because it's related to the general plan. The other recommendation will be going through the county council, but.
So, that needs to be motion to recommend to not increase the annual allocations from 400 to 600.
Can we put in there to move forward with additional study?
And yet, to remove, yeah, with, with more study, and also still suggest that we would recommend removing the allowance to share allocations?
So, the removal of the shared allocation allowance, that's, that's, that's a provision in the county code, in the ApFO code, which is why that's not before you formally this evening. However, since it's coupled with the adjustment in the allocations numbers, we wanted to present it to you holistically.
So, you recommend, you, you want, want to try that again? It's late.
I just don't want it to go from 400 to 600.
Well, can we recommend that we do not increase, establish communities allocations from 400 to 600?
And we move forward with additional study?
Okay.
With additional study for what in particular?
Established.
Making a, we should probably clarify that.
Well, we were speaking specifically additional study in the schools test, but.
In particularly, right, we're focusing mostly on the schools test.
Correct, well, that's not what we're here for.
Yeah, the schools test is really.
Good point.
Well, the 400 to 600 is the established community, so we want to look into that.
Oh, so we're recommending that we don't go from 400 to 600, and that we're asking for them to do additional study?
Right, correct. And that, and that 400 to 600 is the sta, is the established community.
Right.
Okay, is everybody okay with it?
Well, I think that when we say just additional study, I think that maybe we would, might want to clarify additional study to?
Look at the annual allocation.
For, for school allocation, or?
Well, I mean, that's, yeah, but.
We can't, well, that's really, we can't say the school, because that's.
Can we make that comment? Can we make that suggestion?
I mean, I would, I would recommend that you focus on the, on the presentation here, the two items in front of you, the, the modifications to the general plan. You can attach whatever additional comments you'd like to, to make to the county council.
So, I guess we're feeling like the 600, the 400 to 600 might be burdensome.
Yes.
And then there's the corresponding reduction in growth and revitalization as well. So, there's two adjustments, the 400 to 600 in established communities, and the 1,200 to 1,000 in growth and revitalization.
So, I would say we approve that.
I think that makes sense, 1,200 to 1,000.
Correct.
Go ahead and keep that, and then just keep, and we don't, we don't.
And we recommend not increasing the allocation from 400 to 600.
And that, and maybe added our notes that, that the planning board, you know, suggests to the county council that any increases in, or consideration of allocation increases are, you know, deeply reviewed as, as it relates to schools, you know, and other things, so. Like, they shouldn't look into any increases.
Well, I do, I do think it's important that, you know, if somebody pulls this up and looks at it as a matter of record, as a matter of record, I think that we should sort of support our decision. Yes, you know, this is, this is the reason that we, we're just getting so much public...
Well, it seems like the school issue.
Yeah, there's a school issue.
It was brought up many times.
Many times. So, and, you know, I just think, it just, it just doesn't square that they know that, I mean, they're, they really cannot stop a development legally if it's waited over a certain period of time, and you cannot just build a school that quickly.
Right.
So, you know, that's the issue for me, is that there, there is going to be some, you know, just overcapacity that, you know, it's not being cared for.
So, we had an opportunity to confer, and, and I think the conclusion is that you either recommend this as a package, or you recommend that it, that the, that it not go forward. And the reason is because you're, you're subtracting in one and not adding in the other, you're reducing the total allocations now countywide. And, and, you know, that's really not on the table for a decision at this point.
Does it make sense?
Yeah, I think that makes it a lot simpler.
Well, but does it make sense? Because if we don't eliminate that pool, we're still, the folks are still able to go over 400.
Well, again, you know, the item that you have before you is, is as a package, so.
That's the best we can do with it.
Okay. Do we have a recommendation?
So, we, so we recommend, we recommend not to approve the GPA. We, whatever it is, so, yeah, we recommend.
Not to approve GPA, 2017 dash a one.
Yeah.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.